And now, we're going to transition for the capital budget with Chris Ryer, Director of the Planning Department.
Morning Chair, President, Members of the Council. This is my sixth and last presentation to you of the capital budget. But it has become some of the most important work I do as a Director of Planning. When I took this position, I had no idea how under-resourced the city's capital budget had become. But this year, Department of Finance will release an update to the 10-year financial plan that recognizes, for the first time, the tremendous liability created by the deferred maintenance in the capital budget. To put it in some perspective, Baltimore County's general obligation, bond allocation, just for their school system, was $200 million a year. Baltimore City's total general obligation bonds for the year was $80 million. Eighty million. But that includes schools, but community economic development projects, park and rec centers, city office buildings, police and fire stations, even affordable housing projects. Recovery funds have provided temporary relief, but we knew we needed to address the shortfall in capital investment in a more permanent manner, and we've begun to do that. With leadership from the city...
Sorry, could you just introduce yourself?
Pardon?
Introduce yourself.
My name is Chris Ryer. I'm the Director of Planning for the City of Baltimore. Thank you. With leadership from the city delegation, the state restored a significant portion of HUR funds to the city for three fiscal years, and all of those funds have been allocated to DOT's capital budget. The Finance Department, working with HCD, Commissioner's here, has pioneered an innovative new source of funding for scattered site vacant houses, and the State of Maryland committed $50 million a year to address vacancy and community development priorities. Finally, the administration successfully supported a 64% increase in GEO borrowing. That is one of the city's most flexible sources of funds for capital management. It went from $80 million a year to $125 million a year, and that was approved by the voters last November. As a result of these increases in our capital budget, we're able to make substantial increased investments in some of our most important assets. We're investing in our youth, in our future. In FY '26, we're investing $27.5 million in schools compared to $19 million in FY ' '25, and $30 million in rec centers and parks compared to $19 million in FY '25. We're nearly doubling the investment in homeowner incentives to $2.8 million in FY ' '25 to $5 million in FY '26, and investing in some of the most vulnerable residents of the city, those experiencing homelessness, with $18 million for the acquisition and renovation of shelter space. Finally, we're investing in the infrastructure residents use every day. More than $40 million in street resurfacings alone in FY '26 compared to $14 million in FY '24 before the HUR funds were restored. And similarly, we're investing $12 million in sidewalk repairs compared to only $1.5 million in FY '24, and adding an additional $12 million in FY '26 just for the ADA consent decree. In addition to increasing capital funding, we're also working with the Finance Department, MOID, and the Mayor's Office to improve the capital budgeting process, reporting on capital projects, and delivery of capital projects. And today, you will hear some of those details in these, the details of these changes. So I'm going to start with the first couple of first capital projects works for you, and I'm going to hand it to Sarah Parnellum to talk about some of the reforms, and I believe Andrew Aleshier from MOID is here to help with that. I'm going to run through this. I think most of you know this, but what the Charter says is, the Planning Department develops the six-year capital program, of which only the first year is enacted into the budget. So the first one is legally adopted by you and the mayor as the capital budget of the city. One thing, you'll hear a reform in the outer five years. Sarah will talk about how the idea behind a good capital budget is that you're not creating a new project in a budget year. That project was created several years earlier as we try to plan ahead for these larger construction projects. I think you know this too. It's a physical improvement, over $50,000. It does not include vehicles, even big vehicles, and it does not include repairs or maintenance costs less than $100,000. And salaries, typically salaries are in the operating budget if the salary is directly related to a capital project, it can be paid for. This is just an illustration, I think this is new this year, trying to show the amount of deferred maintenance in the City of Baltimore. We'll guesstimate it's at least $2 billion. And I'm not going to swear on that number, but I don't think it's less than that number. So you see the total need, you'll see what's programmed in the CIP, and you'll see what we've been doing for the last 15 years. This is the process. I think you all know this too, but just to reiterate, it starts in September, right? The agencies get a target that we have based on the amount of money we have. There are eight agencies, I'll show that in a minute. They all get a ballpark number that they work towards. They spend the fall putting together their capital, juggling all the requests and all the needs and all the deferred maintenance that they have to deal with. And then it goes through, around the holiday season, we take what they've submitted and make it fit into the city's, into the city's capital allocation, and then it starts going through a public process. So I hope you get a chance every January, every agency that participates in the CIP makes a pretty detailed presentation to the Planning Commission about what they're doing and why they're doing it. And I can tell you, every agency knows what their needs are. There's not a lack of information there. But what they're showing in their presentation is how they're trying to juggle those needs. Finally, the Planning Commission, after reviewing it, will make its recommendations to you all. It then goes through the Board of Finance and Board of Estimates and comes to you. That's the annual process. And then this is an important slide. When we're reviewing the projects, both our staff and the agency staff, we're not pulling them out of thin air. We have criteria, they are very logical, I think. I think they've been well thought through over the years. It's not meant to mean that we're not flexible, but a legal mandate is a legal mandate, right? And some of these are value, value statements by the City of Baltimore, and some of them are just, I would call, common sense or return on investment, things like that. All right. Work stream is a funny, kind of a funny word. Anyway, I'm trying to show the process here, and this year, we've introduced a new slide to really show the kind of the heart of the collaboration that it takes in city government to make a capital project work. So we, in this Venn diagram, are the pink strategic planning part. We're the upfront part, sort of taking where the city is going, what the agencies have to work with, and getting kind of it all pointed in the right directory. Fiscal management, on the other hand, is the Department of Finance. That's the back end. Are things being spent in a proper way? Is money sitting around that shouldn't be sitting around? Are the right accounts being used for the right projects? All that kind of, are we using state money correctly, federal money correctly, all those issues? And then project delivery, we're really happy to have a new partner in MOID, Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development. That's really looking at where the bottlenecks are in delivering these very large capital projects. And then, there's one more slide on the collaboration. This, again, summarizes in the middle are the eight agencies that participate in the capital budget, and then the sort of different teams within Planning or Finance or MOID that work together to finalize this document. And then finally, the roles here, in color-coded. You can see the BBMR is identifying the amount of money that we can afford to borrow. Planning develops the capital budget, sort of puts the basic plan together. MOID and the boards are overseeing the implementation process. Again, Finance provides the accounting services, and Trax deals with the bond issuances and all that. And then, the agencies have the biggest part of all, right? They have to build these things. So the whole process of managing a capital project happens in the individual agency. And so, last year when I was here, we promised a lot of reforms, and Sarah is here to go over that this year. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Parnellum. I'm the Division Chief for Policy and Data Analysis within the Planning Department, and I am excited to share with you, before we get into the details of the capital budget, I'm excited to share with you some of the budget reforms that Director Ryer mentioned. So we implemented at the beginning of the capital budget season, instructions for agencies with some new policy guidance to reform the way that we prepare capital budgets in the City of Baltimore. And the first... See if I can get this right. The first thing that we did is we changed our approach to how we start the budgeting process. So in the past, we started over every year in preparing a six-year program, and that really doesn't make sense if you have a six-year program. You really should be starting with what was in the program and bringing that forward and evaluating, is that still what our needs are? And so that's what we did. We started the planning process with the prior year's capital improvement program. And so this allows for greater consistency, greater transparency. It also allows for us to report on what has changed, to explain why there are changes. Is there a difference in the cost? Is there a difference in priority? Why are we making changes from what was in last year's program compared to what we're presenting to you today? So that's one of the changes that we made this year. The next change that we made is that we started budgeting not just totals for projects, but budgeting by project phase. So understanding how much was an agency requesting for design of a project? How much was an agency requesting for construction of a project? Were they asking for funds for other phases of a project? And the goal of that was to fund the entire phase in a single fiscal year. So previously, due to a lack of funding, we were funding projects piecemeal over time, and so it took many years to accumulate enough funds to be able to put that project out for a board. And the idea is that a project is cheapest when you first identify it, right? Not if you wait many years to accumulate funds. So over the decades, had we addressed deferred maintenance in real time, it would have been more affordable. Now we're in a situation where we have millions and billions of dollars of deferred maintenance that is accumulated over decades, and so we need to address those issues now rather than accumulating funds over many years. So the idea is to be able to fully fund a phase of a project in a single fiscal year as much as possible, rather than spreading it out over multiple fiscal years. And I'm pleased to say that we were very successful in doing that for the majority of the program. The third reform that we have been, have been making over the last several years is to try and focus on state-of-good repair. We know that there are important projects, there's kind of sexy things we can do with capital funds, but we need to make sure that we're focusing on a state-of-good repair. There was a banner article, you know, just recently about resurfacing and catching up on our resurfacing needs. It's not sexy, there's no ribbon cutting necessarily, but we have to do the basics, right? We have to make sure that our buildings are being taken care of, that we're taking care of the HVAC and the roof. They're not, you know, pretty, they're not necessarily visible to the naked eye, but we have to do those state-of-good repair things. Otherwise, our buildings don't function, our roads are not drivable. The next reform that we made in terms of how we are budgeting is that we're making a distinction between projects and programs, and we're asking agencies to provide different data points for projects versus programs. So included in the capital improvement program, we have both types of investments. We have projects where, you know, we're making improvements to the exterior of City Hall. When everyone came in today, you know, you passed through scaffolding. This is a project with a beginning and a middle and an end. It is a specific thing that we can fund, it has a cost estimate, it has a timeline, we know when we will start and finish. There are other items that are in the capital budget that are programs, where we're doing those every single year. We're resurfacing roads every single year. There's no start and finish. We will always be resurfacing roads. And the same is true for home improvement incentives, or facade improvements, or any of those items. And so we want to understand what the optimal funding level is for those, knowing how much roads we have, how many lane miles we have in the city, how long does a road generally last when you resurface it, then how many should we be doing on an annual basis if we had the funding? What is the optimal funding level? So that's a different piece of data that we're collecting for programs compared to the projects. The next reform that we included for this year is requiring agencies to identify grants prior to requesting federal or state funds for the budget year. So in the past, there was a different approach, and that resulted in us having a lot of appropriations for federal and state revenue that we did not have revenue to back up. And so we've been going through a process, mentioned it, you know, recently with the Council in the quarterly meetings, about de-appropriating those, because it really, it is not good fiscal practice, one, to have all of those appropriations on the books that we don't have revenue for, but it also obscures the amount that we actually have for projects. So if we're looking at how much we've spent versus how much is appropriated, it's very misleading if you have appropriations that we cannot spend. So we are making the policy change going forward, that the grant needs to be secured before we include it in the budget. And then the last item in terms of budget reforms is we're continuing a policy that we started in fiscal year '25, allowing agencies to document needs that they have above the available funding. So we give agencies a target, they can't request, you know, all of the projects that they need. We would be looking at millions and billions of dollars that we just don't have the resources for, so that really doesn't make sense in terms of an approach, but we want to know what those needs are, and so we ask agencies to provide some insights into those. In addition to budget reforms, we have also been implementing reporting reforms. So we want to make the process of understanding the status of capital projects more transparent, and so we've been undertaking several reporting reforms. So the first one is revenue category corrections, so that we have accurate information about the revenue categories for all of our projects. If we're going to be reallocating funds, we need to know what funds we have in order to make reallocations. We can't reallocate state funds for a project that those state funds would be ineligible for, so we need to be very sure we know the correct revenues. And so that has been a process that we have undertaken. We have also been consolidating balances across capital projects. So every capital project, if you look at the CIP, you'll see it has a unique identifier that starts with PRJ, that's the account number essentially for the project. And we ended up, through the transition to Workday, with multiple PRJs that were for the same purpose. And so that made it very hard to see the total balance for that project when there were multiple accounts. And so we've been working with agencies to consolidate those, so that we have the ability to see the balance all in one place and report that to the Council and to other interested stakeholders. As I mentioned just a moment ago, we've been de-appropriating appropriations that don't have revenue sources, so that's for federal and state. We'll also be looking at our other revenue. And then, coming attraction, we will be working on appropriation work tags and funding source rules. That's one of our next reporting reforms that we have in the works that will allow us to report balances by funding source. And that's been really kind of the key piece of information that we've been missing to date. So at this point, I wanted to turn it over to our colleague, Andrew Aleshier, who is the Acting Director of the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development. He's going to talk about some of the project delivery reforms that the city has been undertaking.
Okay, thank you. Andrew Aleshier from the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development. Sarah kind of gave an overview brief, kind of what planning is focusing on related to capital project delivery reforms. In MOID's case, we're focused a lot on what are the system supports, kind of a horizontal view. So I wanted to provide some context here. First, quickly with MOID, we, one of the things that we take a look at is what are the issues? We're positioned so we can take a look at horizontally, I use that word a lot instead of vertically. Horizontally, what are the issues across project delivery that kind of, you know, either affect each project, the contracts? Sometimes you'll hear people use project and contract interchangeably, sometimes you won't, but we take a look at a lot of these systemic issues. What are some of the solutions? What are some of the problems that are needed in order to advance these projects in a faster way, keep things on budget, keep them on scope? Because as we know, scope creep can happen, that can increase costs, increase time. And so that's a really important thing that we want to take a look at and be sure that we're focusing on. And so what we think this does, this brings more transparency and consistency to the process. We also want accountability. We want to make sure that our agencies are spending money appropriately, but also based upon how they said they are. And so this really gives us a broad view on what to look at, and these reforms kind of help update and modernize moving forward. In April, I'd want to say the mayor, I think it was end of April, early May, mayor issued an executive order that really overviews and outlines kind of what this year-long report that we worked on did. This was not done in a silo. The idea is, we worked with many agencies, contracting folks, engineers, project managers, plus we did some feedback surveys from external partners to really understand what are the challenges in our system? What do people see? Those that interact with the system every day, that are working with the procedures, that are working with the standards. What's slowing things down? What's, you know, stopping accessibility? What's making things maybe more inequitable? And so these are needed updates. Really what we've, there's several things we've looked at, but that we have found, procurement needs to be streamlined. People are unfamiliar sometimes with what the process may be after they touch their piece of the process. We also want to increase vendor access. That was a big complaint, not just internally, but also externally. So internally, we hear the complaint that more bidders are wanted for projects when something goes out to bid, and by improving that, we think we can help with costs, with competitiveness, with equity and accessibility to projects. And externally, vendors also said the same thing. They want more access to what these projects are. And so we take a look at these areas and say, how can we improve these? What are some of the solutions? We don't want to do this in a silo, we want to do this with our agency partners. And that's currently where we are now. We have several work groups. There's 23 recommendations in that report. Some are pretty direct and some are more broad. It's purposely built that way because some of the more broad ones, for instance, that we are touching on now, is related to regulations and standards and procedures. The recommendation is very broad, but there is very specific regulations and procedures we'll be getting to, and those may require separate work groups or just implemented solutions. And so, calling attention to this slide real quick, there was a presentation in April that outlined a couple of the challenges with the project delivery. Procurement delays, limited vendor participation, and regulatory bottlenecks. These were concerns that had been brought up previously to Council, I think it was in early April, I forget the date. And so what I wanted to do is, the subbullets under each of these really show kind of how we are addressing some of these. There's more we are addressing, and these don't really tell the full story, but I wanted to kind of call back to what was already briefly discussed. So related to procurement delays, there's streamlining outdated steps. So one of the first things we did, we captured kind of all the pieces of the workflow in the system for project delivery, from idea inception to maintenance and delivery, which is the final piece of this whole capital project ecosystem. Hopefully I don't use the word ecosystem again, been using it too much recently. But streamlining outdated steps, you know, there's 200 and some steps we found in the system. Right there, I can, you can already see that it depends on how you define a step. Maybe that's too much, maybe it's not. It needs to be clear, and so that's kind of one of the first things we started doing. And by doing that, that helped us develop some more recommendations and solutions that we think we can move towards. Another thing we're looking at, we just started, is piloting outcome-based RFPs. The city uses RFPs in some instances, also uses IFBs, the Invitation for Bids, in many instances. So the idea is, are there innovative contracting methods we can use to produce better outcomes? What do we want to do, rather than just a prescriptive contract that may have 100 pages to it? Let's keep, maybe something simple, but keep it defined on what we want. It's not a one-size-fits-all, so really, we're working with agencies to see where that can be applied, if it can be applied in a better way. And then also, there's training staff. Something that was announced recently is Infrastructure Academy. Inside of that is a piece related to training staff and improving speed and consistency. So project management pieces, procedures, are they shared? Are they accessible? We think we know the process, but do we have them available? Are they accessible? The other piece is limited vendor participation. That's a big thing that we hear over and over again. I don't know if others hear it too, maybe in the Council. But where are the projects? What are the projects? But also internally, they get bids back, you may get one or two or three bids only, and when you've got, Simbad would know the exact number, but when you've got 1,200 certified MBEWBS, and you've got something about 1,000 pre-qualified contractors and consultants in the city, when you're only getting that level, it's not always the city's fault. Sometimes people just don't want to bid, but right there, you're seeing that there's a number, that we need to increase those that are bidding. So, you know, how is we, how we as a city can improve that process? Maybe it's regulations, maybe it's procedure, maybe it's outreach. And so that's kind of what we're looking at now. An early one is the pre-qualification rules. We're at the very early stages of that, but what lets you be pre-qualified? What lets you be certified? Are there things that can be changed? Can we make it easier to do so? One I've got listed up here is launching a centralized bidding opportunity website. I keep saying "opportunity" simply because it's communications. Okay. And that's, there's regulatory bottlenecks that I could answer questions on later, but that's it for these deliver reforms.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, I'm going to introduce Sarah again to go through the specific recommendations of the fiscal year '26 through '31 CIP. We're going to start with the revenue categories.
Right. Good morning again. So I'm going to walk through the source of funds for the capital budget. So, included in the capital budget, we have several categories of revenue that support capital improvements. First, we have local discretionary funds. These are our most flexible funds. So this includes general fund revenue, that is the same as the general fund revenue that we have in the operating budget, but this is specifically identified for investment in capital projects. And then we also have general obligation bonds that are approved by voters every two years. These are our most flexible funds, but are a relatively small portion of the capital budget. The next revenue category that we have is highway user revenue. These are funds that the city receives from the state, and they are specifically used for transportation-related projects. We have federal and state funds that come to us with restrictions. So as we receive federal funds, they may be CDBG funds that come from HUD that have to be used for specific housing purposes, or we maybe get federal highway administration funds from the US Department of Transportation that obviously have to be used for eligible transportation projects. One of the largest components of the capital budget is the utility revenue. These are funds that are generated from the water bills. These are funds that are generated from the water bills and are used to support the three utilities, water, wastewater, and stormwater. In addition to local contributions, the surrounding counties that participate in the utilities also contribute to those capital projects. And then we have a couple of other funds. So just to see that visually for FY '26, you can see that the majority of funds that make up the recommendations for FY '26 are those utility funds represented here in the various shades of green. The next category are those restricted funds that are federal and state, represented in blue. Our general fund, highway user revenue, is about 10% of the FY '26 capital budget. This is a much larger share than we've seen in the recent past. And then about 20% of the capital budget, so larger than it's been in the recent past, but still, you know, the minority is those flexible funds, the general obligation bonds and the general funds. And if we look at the pattern over the six-year program, we will see kind of similar proportions in all of the years. You'll see that the utility funds really dominate in all of the years, and as those vary based on the cycle of projects, the entire capital budget varies. So unlike the operating budget, the capital budget is, is a bit lumpy. It varies from year to year. It's not just in a straight line, very gradually going up with inflation, but it's modified based on, on some of those project cycles and funding availability. Another thing that I want to point out here in yellow is that highway user revenue. I think you can see it for, for FY '26 and '27 pretty clearly as a significant chunk, but it becomes almost invisible starting in FY '28. And that's because the temporary increase in highway user revenue is, is finished after FY '27. And so we need to continue, you know, the advocacy at the state level to have those funds restored if we want to continue increasing the amount, for example, of resurfacing that we're doing. So just wanted to get into some of those local discretionary funds in a little bit more detail and look at some trends, not just what is programmed, but kind of what the history has been for, for some of these fund sources. So if we look at general obligation bonds, you can see that they were relatively flat for many, many, many years. In blue is FY '26, so you can see the significant increase we have, the additional investment in, in, in capital infrastructure, starting in FY '26. And then you can see the stair step up as we are working to increase that to 200 million over time. For highway user revenue, the grayish color is the operating budget and the orange is capital. And so you can see that, you know, when we had the recession back in 2009, 2010, the highway user revenue that was available for capital really, really fell off and disappeared. But we've had this temporary increase now for, for last year, this year, and next year. And you can see kind of the increased levels, and then it falls off, falls off again. And then if we look at general fund revenue trends, you can see that this really varies very dramatically. It depends on what is going on in terms of the city's economic position, what is happening with the operating budget, whether there are one-time funds available to support additional investments in capital. And FY '26, you can see that we do have some additional one-time funds available for, for capital investment. So we can look at all three of those local discretionary funds together, and you will see in the, in the, in the final solid bar, that's FY '26, you can see that this is really the highest level of local discretionary investment that we've had in 20 years and probably really in forever. And so it's very exciting what we're able to do. Obviously, we always need more, but it's very exciting in terms of, of what we're able to invest in. I'm just going to very quickly show you the use of funds because I think we are, we're time constrained. There's a chart for, for your interest in terms of the recommendations by agency. You can see that visually. So this really mirrors what we saw in terms of the revenue categories. The utilities were one of the largest revenue categories. DPW with the utilities, you know, is the largest share of the, the recommendations by agency. And that pattern repeats for the six years. And I can conclude there and answer questions.
Thank you. And before I hand it over to CP, I just want to also let everyone know that joining us today is Councilman John Bullock from the Knight-Dincher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Ryer and your team. I just want to thank you on behalf of the council for your many, many years of service to our city. I knew you in your Southeast CDC days. You've just been a real mensch and someone who has poured their whole heart and soul into serving the city. And so I want to just begin by thank you because I know it's a labor of love, but it's also just been, the, the work you have done to make our city stronger has not gone unnoticed. I also want to thank your staff, really able team. You've always brought good folks to bear, and the partnership has always been deeply appreciated. So I wanted to start there. I do want to shift gears and ask about the Greenway Trail. This has been really challenging for the city. You know, I think there was a lot of excitement early on, a lot of energy, and I think if Baltimore is going to truly experience the renaissance that we all know we're headed toward, it is critically important that every dollar that gets allocated from the state or the federal government gets spent wisely. And I have to say, I've been disappointed by the slow pace of this project, and particularly was disappointed when a million and a half dollars was allocated by Delegate Edelson, and then that money was not spent, and so it was taken back. Thankfully, our delegation was able to get it back. I want to understand what are the immediate next steps for the Greenway Trail so that we can really put some shovels in the ground? Because I just think Baltimoreans deserve walkability, livability, just deserve a great, amazing trail network, and there is no reason why we as a city can't have nice things like a world-class trail system. And so wanted to understand from you where we are on that project. I did see, I think, $3 million sort of went away potentially in the budget. I, I, I may have that wrong. That might be the 1.5 and then, and then a match from Delegate Edelson. But if you could just talk about where we are in planning and building and really getting shovels into the ground for the Greenway Trail, I would appreciate it.
Sure, great. Let me start maybe for everyone to give some context here. The Greenway Trail is part of something we call the Green Network Plan, which was the premier product of the department prior to my coming back to the, to the department, my predecessor's main project. And it was designed in a time when the, the city was downsizing in population and in housing units. And we had a governor that was focused on a, a major demolition program. So that, that process created a lot of new open space in the city that was not park space. It was not managed space. No one really owned it even at that point. So the trail was thought as a way of pulling all this together. Historically in Baltimore, and, and for this trail, I will say, it is a composite of both right-of-way and wreck and park property. We have some of that in the city in the Jones Falls Trail. I, I was personally involved in the develop of the Gwynne's Falls Trail, which started out as a wreck and park project, but then went on to surface streets down in the Carroll-Campden industrial area until it joined the, the harbor. All of these are connected by the original waterfront promenade, which Baltimore is very famous for. It connects to trails that go out into the neighborhood, like fingers into the neighborhood, so that the whole city can access this promenade. So the issue was, we created this plan. As you know, we're the guardians of the capital budget, so we walk a fine line when we're advocating for a project. When I became director, it, it became clear from my days in Highland Town that acquiring the Norfolk Southern property was the key action at the time. Without that, there was no loop. And there was, the Department of Transportation and the Department of Wreck and Parks were not focused on that. So the Department of Planning undertook that role, realizing we were never going to be the construction manager of the trail or the operator of the trail, but we could at least oversee the acquisition process. So that has been a journey. The, it's a, it's a very large property that goes throughout East Baltimore, has numerous fingers. We started conversations with Norfolk Southern. By the way, their, their staff turnover is incredible. You start all over every six months with, with them. We determined that we, that we would only be able to buy the whole thing. We couldn't just buy the part we needed. We determined through the, the rail banking process was not optimal in this situation by working with Rails2Trails. And we proceeded to, to do appraisals and then worked towards, with a fundraising scheme towards those appraisals. So we did the first appraisal in-house, then we did a second appraisal, outside, an outside appraisal. And ultimately, one of, part of the capital stack was a federal earmark. The federal earmark kicked in the federal NEPA process, the, the environmental review process, the one thing everybody's afraid of. That is roughly a two-year process. And, and I was proud, I think you know some of the team members that managed that. It was, nobody enjoys a NEPA process. We did that, that one and a half million dollars that we lost came in the middle of that process when we were frozen. We could not spend money at that point, right? We had to go through the NEPA process where you can do, you couldn't even, during the NEPA process, you couldn't even talk to the railroad. Like that was forbidden because the NEPA process sort of assumes that the federal government's trying to pull a fast one on a little guy. They don't think that it's a fast one on a railroad. So we're, we were forbidden to, to talk to the railroad. There are lease, leases on, on the property that we know of. You probably know of them from Highland Town. But we could not, we could not ask the railroad for that documentation. So we, we were flying blind on the leases. All those produce income, right? Or could be sold and produce more capital. So we have now exited the NEPA process. We've, we've, our team has added, the delegate restored the, the funding from the state. We scoured all of our old Greenway accounts, came up with a, almost the same amount of money, and we received another state grant. So we're well north of $7.5 million, which is well north of the acquisition price. And with one final appraisal, we will be able to begin negotiations with the, with the railroad. In the meantime, I, I want to say that Department of Transportation and MOID have both stepped up. MOID to coordinate the sort of multi-agency aspect of this, and, and DOT to do the actual right-of-way acquisition, which is what this will be, as well as they will, with the money we have left over, once we determine the acquisition price, they can begin the design, the design process, which will give us a construction estimate. Now, I, I mean, you saw the presentation today, HUR funds fall off the cliff in a year. We will, at, at that point, we will have a big number that we have to fund for the construction of the trail. So it is ongoing now. There are numerous smaller grants out by DOT primarily for projects on the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way. But, but once we have, we get to 30% design, which I think we have the funding for now, then we will begin to have some real cost estimates that we can actually put in the CIP. When did this project start? Uh, the Green Network Plan, probably 2015, I want to say. I will just put it in perspective. I was a, or a project manager for the Gwynne's Falls Trail. I worked for the Trust for Public Land on that. That was the first trail project in the city and one of the first in the state. Came out of the Elder Bush Highway Act funding. That project took 15 years. It was expanded four times. It grew as it, as it developed. It now stretches from the I-70 dead end all the way to the harbor. It, it started out as a Leak and Park project that was added on to as resources became available.
So we've been at this for about a decade and have very little physically to show for it. Meanwhile, cities like Pittsburgh, Detroit, New Orleans are building an enormous amount of trail network, and we are lagging behind. I definitely will appreciate, and I know Councilman Parker's constituents will also appreciate the complexity of the acquisition of the Norfolk Southern spur. That has been a challenge, but we can't have projects where state money is delivered and then taken away and then redelivered. The state is not in the fiscal condition to be able to continue to, when we don't spend our money, continue to support. I do also want to appreciate City Administrator Leach, and I had this conversation a while ago, and she mentioned engaging and putting this project in part in MOID, and I think that was the right move. Mr. Chair, with your permission, what I would like to request from the administration is an update to this committee within a reasonable amount of timeframe. And Nina, please help me determine what that is. I would like a written report. Who are all the current partners in the Greenway Trail network? Where, where is the delivery of the project at each phase of the way, whether that's in the northern part, whether that's the southeast part? I, I would just like a clear understanding of both where we are and what MOID and everybody else is doing, like what the relationships are. And then two, how you all are going to spend the 14 million this year that has been allocated to this? Because I really think we need to deliver at this point in this project. It is, like I said, been going on a very long time with not enough to show for it. So Nina, what's, what's a fair timeline to get something in writing from you all?
Thank you, Mr. President. So what I'd like to do before providing a timeline is just to consult with the agencies who've been working on the project primarily. But today is Thursday, so I think that at least by Monday, I should be able to give you a reasonable timeline. I don't think it'll be too long, but I just want to make sure that they have adequate time to, to prepare that for you.
Okay. And just to be clear, I'm not looking for a, you know, massive report or anything. I don't, I don't want to put anyone through that. But what I do want for this committee, as we negotiate this budget, is just a clear understanding of where we are, what's been done, who is doing what? Because there's always been this confusion about it, and how this year's $14 million is going to be spent. So by Monday, you'll be able to let me know when that, that's coming?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And again, thank you, Director Ryer, for all of your years of service. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I echo those same sentiments, Mr. Ryer. Thank you for your leadership with planning and just with the capital budget, if all you do, and will, I guess, continue to do in whatever capacity you take in your next endeavor. So thank you, Mr. Ryer. I have a couple of questions, and then I will pass it off to my colleagues. My first one is, I noticed last night that the last couple of years, DPW has requested funding for infrastructure tied to the less water, better Baltimore plan? Oh, sorry, less waste, better Baltimore. Things like additional recycling centers and facilities recover construction and demolition material. But the investments seem to have rolled back in FY '24 and '25, and now it looks like there's nothing in FY '25. and now it looks like there's nothing in FY '26. Can you help me understand what the thinking is behind that? Because I'm concerned that we're stepping back away from these capital projects that are really important for our city's sustainability and environmental future.
Right. I'll start. My peers can chime in. But you may remember during COVID, at one point, 50% of the DPW employee, workers were sick, right? We stopped picking up recycling. The Clean Core program was born because we stopped cleaning vacant lots and alleys. We were just barely maintaining the route structure of DPW. There was a large capital infusion into the department that year, particularly around these health issues, the HVAC, the showers, the changing rooms, those kinds of things. And they're just implementing that now. There, plus there was an overhaul of the fleet, the recycling trucks, all that. So I think that, I think the answer is that they have their hands full in terms of managing those contracts right now. We would expect them to come back. They also are implementing the less waste, better Baltimore strategy, which is a waste reduction strategy that has a timeline attached to it, right? When the incinerator contract ends, which about five, six years from now, then the rate of solid waste going to landfill increases tenfold, tenfold. So suddenly, this large expansion of the landfill will fill up. And then you're looking at shipping waste out of state. So they are in the process of like getting that plan together with how they're going to manage that transition. I don't think they're ready to put dollars on it at this point. But I would predict that will be a big issue before this council in the next couple of years.
Thank you for that, yeah. It was just, you know, I'm new here, so it was a little puzzling. Because last night, DPW indicated that part of the capital investment for this year is the east side transfer station would support the compost facility co-located there. But DPW also indicated that the funded capacity of facility for the, well, yeah, for the facility is 12,000 tons per year, which is the amount funded by the EPA grant that the city received in FY '24. If that is right, if this year's funding isn't going to add to the compost facility capacity, what's it going to do and how much? And if it's, and if it is going to support the compost facility as opposed to the rest of the facility?
Yeah, good question. I'm not going to be able to answer the technical parts of this, but I can tell you this. First, it is driven by a federal grant. And to the president's earlier comment, that federal grant goes away if we don't match it in a certain time period. So that's why it's in the budget for this year. What they are, what in general with DPW is combining improvements to one of their facilities, the Bowley's Lane Yard, to improve those facilities and accommodate this new, what will be a pilot project for the city. The first composting facility that the city has ever operated. So that's basically where it is, that they know they can do that. They have the money to redo the facility, and they don't want to lose the federal grant.
And thank you for that answer. I get more and more concerned in the growing months. And, you know, no fault of yours, but as we continue to want to move towards a sustainable future, it's time for the city as a whole to put out money where our mouth is. And if we're not putting those dollars where they should be, before we know it, we'll be stuck again in a situation where we'll have to do a two, a three, four, or five-year extension for Bresco or for Willabray, whatever the company is called. And we're right back in the same position again. And so I definitely respect the answers, but I would just love to see us do more substantially in a real way to make sure that we are moving towards a sustainable future.
Yeah, I'll just wrap it up to remind folks that we, in this case, the Department of Public Works generates the capital request. We won't generate it. Now, our Office of Sustainability is working with them on this plan. But the CIP is built around requests generated by the, we don't add, we only subtract, basically.
Yep, thank you for that. So in District 8, we have a lot of things, a lot of great schools, a lot of great people. I would say a great council person. And what we don't have is a community pool. And the closest community pool that we have for our babies this summer is Jordan Hill Park. And outside of the summer, it's Cahill for most of the folks that live on the south side of the district. And although it's probably a mile away, because Lincoln Park is there, it may be, it like, it may as well be on like the east side of the city as far as like the ability to get there on public transportation and the limitations we have for public transportation right now in the city. So can you walk me through the process in which we, as a community in the eighth district, can work with the city to request a plan and get support in getting a community pool for that district? Because it's a huge hole and it's much needed. And it would service not just the eighth, but the ninth and also parts of the 10th as well.
Sure. So this is for a capital project, right? A project that's larger than $50,000. What the process should look like is that the Department of Recreation and Parks is literally thinking six years ahead, and they're putting it in the outer year of the CIP. In this case, it would be FY '31. And then every year, it would move up. So thinking they have this whole group of projects in the pipeline, so to speak, and they're following their pipeline for whatever reason. That is the ideal scenario. Emergencies happen, all kinds of things can happen that we have to manage as a city and they have to manage as a department. But particularly for a new project, I would, I would say that is the right way to make it happen.
I appreciate that answer. Hey, Jenny. I'm just messing with you. Yeah, and so I'll be really interested to work with Wreck and Parks and make sure we can get that on there. It's not just a benefit for my district, but for the surrounding area. And if we want to make sure that our kids are safe and doing things other than what some media outlets want to highlight, I think a pool goes a long way into giving them something recreational and fun to do and keeping them cool with record temperatures predicted for this summer and probably every summer after. Those are my questions. I'm going to pass it off to Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the committee for having this. We usually just get one hour for capital. We are getting two. I would advocate strongly to the council president and to the committee to have more hours on the capital budget. It is as vital as the operating budget, and the council does not get enough time with it. So I'm really interested in continuing the conversations about how we can, as a council, have a bigger role in this, both because we have projects in our district, but also from an oversight perspective. And Director Ryer, thank you so much for your years of service here to the city. Really grateful, obviously have made such a tremendous difference relative to community development, frankly, in the city. So thank you. And Chief Parmelum, I want to just thank you also for being able to put all these reports together that I have asked for. So I'm really grateful for that as well. We have much more information this year than we've ever had, and part of it is the reforms that you've put in place. But also, you know, I think you, your office as well was interested in these kinds of transparency. So I'm just, this is light years ahead of what we had even two years ago. So thank you for all the time that you spent on that. So my question, I have several questions. One question is, is who monitors spend? Because we have, with the ARPA money, we get these reports and they tell us who's not spending and what. And the recovery office is working with every agency to try to get that spend down. We have a deadline, so we've got to spend. But I'm seeing, and I'm looking at your report that you provided for us in your quarter three report, which is very thick, which I'm happy to see all of these great projects. But there are several areas here where the spend is not happening. And, or at least not for the two years that you have in this report. So I'm curious how the monitoring of spend occurs. Particularly, I know that we're changing to doing like, you know, projects. But I think what I'm seeing in terms of not spending are the programs. And so how is that monitored? Do you work with the agencies? What happens in this regard?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So this is new territory for the Department of Planning. So we are, we have new analysts on board who are going to be working to monitor spend going forward. In order to facilitate that, we implemented and are continuing to implement the reporting reforms that I highlighted, which are really necessary in order to be able to do that monitoring in a meaningful way. So we're going to be doing that kind of at a high level across the entire universe of capital projects. And then the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development does more detailed monitoring for key projects. So they've identified an inventory of 53 projects that they are following in detail and monitoring not just the spend, but kind of all of the aspects of those projects in detail. So we have a partnership in terms of how we're looking at spend.
And obviously, for capital projects, sometimes there's delays in spending just because there's the weather problem. And then there's, you know, BGE gets in the way or whatever, right? So we have that, I get that. But in some of our other programs that are for maybe home repair or some of the things that are specifically, that are, as I understand, your definition of program is, we're not seeing spend here. So would you go back to the agency and say, hey, what's going on? How can we help? Or how's that going to work?
Yeah, that's what we'll be doing going forward, kind of once we have the infrastructure in place to be able to do that type of monitoring for spending. So those ones refresh every year. And so we want to make sure that they're not accumulating kind of multiple years of funding without spending it down. So that's what we'll be looking for.
And then you would be able to report to us also sort of that status if we have a specific interest in a couple of these. I mean, we can go through the whole thing. I'm not going to go through it today, but there are some that, you know, I just want to make sure that we're able to get the money out the door because it's here and our residents need it. So maybe we can work on what that, our role in sort of looking at that as well? Because we want to be helpful in that regard to make that happen. Because I think it's, you know, it's important. So related to that, there's something in your quarter three report. I don't know if you have it in front of you, but I'm looking at the Housing and Community Development Unallocated Reserve and Baltimore Development Corporation Unallocated Reserve. One is $121 million. That doesn't look like it's got any spend. Is that just reserve in case catastrophe happens at the federal government? I mean, what is that?
So some of what you're seeing in that report is, well, a lot of what you're seeing in that report is prior to the reforms that I was discussing. So when you do the quarter four reporting, you will begin to see some of the reforms reflected in the report. So the deappropriation of federal and state funds, you know, doesn't show in that quarter three report. So the amounts that are available compared to spending are misleading because the amounts look, you know, inflated with those state and federal approaches.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize. You may have said it, and I'm sorry it didn't click.
Yeah, so as we like continue to make these reforms, that report will become more and more useful because we will, you know, be implementing those. Another, you know, piece is that there's several thousand projects right now through the consolidation effort to consolidate balances. We're not able to consolidate the projects, but we are able to consolidate the balances. That will make it a more manageable number of projects to be able to do that monitoring. I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
No, it's similar. I mean, I had these specific questions, but I think this might have to do with some federal and state money that you're reallocating. So we'll go back to that offline. But I think that, so in terms of timing of seeing those types of reports, are we going to get in your quarterly reports moving forward at the beginning of the fiscal year?
Yes, we are working on kind of a new, so we have the report that we provided for quarter three. We can continue to provide that report, but we want to expand upon that in the future. And we're looking at what that looks like in terms of monitoring spending to improve even beyond the report that we provided for quarter three.
And currently, when there isn't spend on a project, you have to get BOE approval to reallocate it elsewhere? Is that right? Or Planning Commission approval? Both?
To transfer to another project requires both Board of Estimates and Planning Commission approval.
Yeah, gosh, that would be great to have as a supplemental so that we can actually get to see it as well. But that's something that we can probably think about at some other time. And then my last question is very specific to Clean Core. Clean Core has 17, it looks like, employees, even more than that. I think there's a lot of employees, and the ARPA funding is ending for that program. I am a humongous fan of this program. It obviously started in my district. So I'm curious, what's the future of the program once the ARPA has ended? I didn't quite clearly see where it is in the operating budget.
Councilwoman Ramos, this is a hearing dedicated to the capital budget.
Oh, good point. I'm sorry.
And since that's an operating expense, we have Planning's operating hearing coming up, I believe, there on the last day of hearings. I might suggest that we bring, that we talk.
Sounds good, absolutely. Yep, my apologies. Yep, that's right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Great to see you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, and thanks to you, I share. Councilman Gray. Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see, so I got a lot of papers up here. So, Director, can you explain to me concretely, you know, I came in midway through the capital planning cycle. Can you explain to me concretely what the council's role in the capital planning process is?
I guess I could, I could say what it is and maybe what it should be would be a way to answer that question. So literally, your role is to review it in this forum and pass it on to be incorporated into the city's budget and be implemented July 1st. The way it should work is that if there is a potential project in your district that you're concerned about or interested in, that you would start a conversation with the relevant agency in the summer. And that is, that's qualified on, we are talking about a six-year program, not a one-year program, and we're really working hard to make it a six-year program. So the longer answer is to begin a conversation with the appropriate agency, maybe the lead agency, if it's an interagency thing, very early on, before it gets into the capital budget. There's a lot of work that has to be done just to figure out what to put in the capital budget for each project, how to estimate and those things. So the answer is, early on, talk to the implementing agency.
Sure, yeah, I appreciate that. The, and I don't know, can we get the slides up? Are those gone? There's a, one of the slides, I think Sarah was talking through. Collaboration within the capital projects work stream. It included BBMR, planning, MOID, boards and commissions, BAPs, Treasury, all the agencies. The city council wasn't listed on the slide. At any point, the, on the workflow, and you alluded to this, but the slide about the process to develop the capital budget, the only time that the city council is referred to is the city council vote, right? The order of estimate, which functionally is, I think functions really strongly as a fait accompli situation. a fait accompli situation. And then the, the, let's see, there was one, another one, the ones that Sarah was going through. It was a pie chart that had the, yeah, the FY '26 recommendations by revenue category. My understanding here is that the, and, and I, this could be a misunderstanding on my part, this is not a gotcha anyway. But the, the only money in that pie chart that the council has, that isn't set up, that isn't determined already, is the, at this point, is the general fund revenue, the 6%. It's the Pago capital. Is, there's also the HER funding. One, is, is the HER funding that, that works in the same way that, I mean, it's limited within, obviously, DOT projects, but it has the, that's still eligible for, to be moved around between the line items by the council, correct?
Councilman, I can, I can jump in here.
Yeah, thanks, Director.
This is really driven by the charter amendment that was, and the parameters that were included by the charter amendment that created the amendment authority for council members. And what that amendment authorized was for the council to make transfers within the general fund budget. And so what that means for the capital budget is that the general fund would include the Pago allocation. That would be our just straight Pago as well as the highway user revenue Pago. And as you were mentioning, in the case of highway user revenue, because that's a state's source that flows through the general fund, it, we still have to be compliant with the state parameters around how we utilize those dollars. So if you were to transfer any of those dollars, they would need to be reallocated to something that is eligible under the HUR program.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, and so really more of a comment, this, the whole, the last couple of weeks has been really, really eye-opening to me to recognize how, how little, and this is obviously, my critique is more of how the, the charter has this set up. It's not a, it's, it's not, this is not me complaining about a lack of engagement or anything by the agencies. I mean, it's, it's, the system is set up so that we have the, the 6% of the pie for Pago and then, you know, while the HER revenue still exists, we have that. So it, it just really striking to me how little influence, how little formal influence the council has over the capital budget process. And so I think, you know, looking towards next year and engagement over the course of the year, I just think that's really important informally because we've got so little formal influence there. So besides that, just in general, very, really excited to see the, the significant growth of the capital budget. As Director Ryer and I've talked about, I, I fully share the, the concerns about like the structural and sustain, like the fiscal sustainability of the municipality with, with our reliance on, heavy reliance on borrowing, heavy reliance on funds, heavy reliance on deferred maintenance. So, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Blanchard, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Director Ryer and your team for being here. One of the things that I think is worth saying is that it's extremely difficult to cover the capital budget in such limited time, even as Councilmember Ramos mentioned, you know, having two hours is great. I will say, I'm fortunate that planning is like a second home to me, being on a planning commission. And I could tell you that we had two sessions, and these are lasting for over four hours, if you can imagine that. I would also say, encourage some of our colleagues, they're open to the public. I know Councilmember Ramos sat in for some of those briefings as well. So again, it's an opportunity to sort of see the process at hand. I do also want to make, give you kudos, particularly you, Sarah, in terms of those reforms. I know the term you used before was transparency, and I, and I believe this really addressed some of the past frustrations with the process, just seeing where funds were and sort of managing folks' expectations. One of the other things I will also say, that you really are the nerve center for so many things happening in the city, right? You're dealing with all these agencies. And our colleagues have talked about some of the projects and programs that are important to them. I think about traffic calming with DOT. We think about composting and recycling as far as the DPW. And then for wrecking parks, we're looking at, you know, park improvements, rec centers as well. But there's also a lot of complexity with it. I know we talked about land acquisition, how that could be a challenge in terms of some of our projects. So I appreciate you giving voice to that. A couple of things I would like you to, to address, though. So one, we know that it's more cost-effective to get a project done early, but I'm curious in terms of what you may be hearing in terms of feedback from different agencies moving forward, thinking about the cost for materials that we know is, is also changing. I would also think, I would also like for you to address really what you're also feeling and hearing from our agencies around the climate with the federal government, which affects us, and then also the state government. I know Councilman Ramos has been a big advocate in terms of highway user revenue. And for those of you who may be watching, have complaints around some of our roads and bridges, a lot of that has to do with the limited funds that we have. But fortunately, we do have those in, in our stead right now. So if you could address how the federal and state budget climate is also affecting the city and project delivery, that would be helpful, too. So thank you.
Sure, thank you for that question. I, I think it's right up the alley of the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure, both the monitoring of the federal, which they do with MOGR, but also the, the process of implementing a capital project. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Ailshard.
Thank you. So I think some, there's a lot to unpack there. Not an expert on tariffs on any measure, but I think some of the tariffs will certainly affect certain contracts. I know I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but DGES gave some pretty good numbers on how some of their contracts could be affected, so we'll be able to, be able to help you get that. And I know tariffs recently at the court level, I think in New York, were just paused last night. And so that could be a little help, but that doesn't mean, I think, they already applied for appeal today. So that's something we're going to have to monitor and pay attention to. And so I think really making sure that we get this, the money spent when it's appropriated. I think planning has done a good job of creating this new rule where, you know, want to allocate for a certain piece of the phase in one year. I think that'll help spend money faster and ultimately decrease costs. You know, if something happens in 2026, you don't want to keep going on that same phase till 2028, 2029, because right there, you're already increasing the cost over that time.
Thank you. And I do want to also make reference to something that Councilmember Gray had mentioned earlier as related to even having a pool, just for the, for the larger context in terms of wrecking parks. So one of the things I was pleased about during the presentations was that Director Moore talked about the heat map that they're utilizing. And so looking at where there's been prior investment, where there's been limited resources implemented, and so that those will be prioritized in the outer years or prioritized. So again, thinking about, as Councilman Gray mentioned, the eighth, the ninth, some of our more under-invested neighborhoods. And one, and I guess that's also, you know, just a directive, and I know you're already on it, but just, you know, from a sustainability point of view and an equity point of view, investing dollars in some of the communities that have historically been neglected. I know you're on the way to doing that, but we could always use some more. So thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director, thank you for your report and all the information. Just had a question. My first question was in regards to the six-year capital improvement plan. I was just wondering if you can elaborate on how this plan is created with respect to anticipated revenue and whether or not there's enough anticipated revenue to fund, I guess, the projects you have in the six-year capital improvement plan?
Are you, I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
I was just saying, I know earlier you mentioned there was kind of like a six-year plan. I was wondering, with that six-year plan, is that created with respect to anticipated revenue from the city? And if so, how does that look versus just for the future revenue coming in versus the six-year plan? Just curious.
Sure, we work with the Finance Department. I'll let the budget director respond to that.
Yeah, so as part of the, the coordination between the, the Budget Bureau and the, the planning team around the capital budget, my team will provide the general fund-backed funding levels that we can anticipate in the capital budget. So when we look at the, this six-year plan, you see things like the anticipated highway user revenue reflected in the out years. You see the drop-off of highway user revenue kick in in fiscal '28. You also see the planned sustained higher geo-borrowing reflected in the out years, and then that base pay-as-you-go capital funding reflected as well. What will happen each year when we work on the capital budget is that as we identify additional resources, we may see that Pago number go up because we would try to allocate additional funds to, to capital wherever we can.
Got it. The reason for my question is just, we want to get ahead of, you know, any foreseeable problems we may have in not having enough revenue to fund some of the capital projects we have in our, I guess, coming up in the pipeline. And if there will be revenue issues, maybe we should look at other sources to fund these capital improvement projects. Because I know that, and whether or not we've looked at some, because I know there are some other options out here besides going to our general, you know, fund and as far as like subscription-based, different services and different ways you can fund these deferred maintenance or year-round capital improvement projects. Just trying to figure out whether or not we've looked into any of that.
Yeah, I guess I'll jump in and then defer back to Director Ryer. I think one of the things that has obviously been a challenge is so much need, so few resources. And so one of the things that is, is a central point of the 10-year plan and one of the, the components, one of those initiatives that I find to be most important for the city is to get to that higher geo-borrowing and to be able to sustain that over the long term. Because that really gets us to a point where we have realistic capital funding that we can start to fund complete components of projects. So we can fund an entire segment of design, we can fund an entire segment of construction so that we can, instead of seeing capital projects that drag out five-plus years, we're getting to a place where we can have some more standard assumptions regarding our timelines, where maybe we can start to shorten our capital turnaround time to, you know, three years, four years, whatever the case may be, end to end. With that, I think that's where we really have to lean into some of the reforms that the Infrastructure Office was talking about in terms of needing to get better at delivering capital projects. So right now, it's very decentralized. There, it, every agency sort of does it their own way. But what we need to do is we need to tighten up how we're doing capital procurement and contracting so that we essentially become better clients to these firms who are executing our capital projects so that we can get, we can increase the universe of folks who want to do work with us on these projects. Because right now, we're not the best client, and the pricing that we're getting from contractors who want to come do work for us is reflective of that. And so I think that's where you really see the reforms coming from planning and MOID in terms of really leaning into how we deliver projects better so that, again, we can improve that turnaround time. Beyond sort of our ability to locally fund, you know, we still continue to actively lean into leveraging outside, outside sources of capital, whether that be federal grants, state grants, also looking at different ways that we can deliver projects through public-private partnerships. You see that happening right now regarding the renovations that we're trying to do at the, at the Baltimore Sun building. Again, all sort of oriented towards how do we kind of come at this deferred maintenance backlog issue from multiple fronts?
Thank you for that, because I was going to mention, too, there is a bunch of private, you know, our resources, funding resources out here that can, you know, help us fund these projects on the front end. That way, it doesn't cost us more money on the back end, because like you mentioned earlier, the sooner we get these projects done, the less it'll cost us. So that, thank you for that portion. And as far as, you know, getting more clients and people are interested in building these projects, if I can provide any feedback, one of the biggest hurdles is just people getting paid in a timely manner. And, and, you know, it's hard for business to kind of go and run without getting paid for 60 days. So I think as we make those strides to do that better, and which I've heard there's been improvements in doing, I think it'll increase the, the base of, of people interested in working with the city. My next question is in regards to, I guess, how we prioritize projects within the budget. I saw like, you know, as far as DOT, like the traffic calming, quick build to our hardscape conversion. I know there's probably, there was about $380,000 set for that. There's a lot of, you know, quick build projects out that people would love to see converted into hardscape conversions. I was wondering, how do you go about prioritizing which projects are, are going to be converted, which ones aren't? Because there's, there's, there's a lot of street calming projects I'm sure residents would like to see.
Yeah, very good question. And I wanted to point out a good example in your district of your prior question, the P3 project with the library on Greenmount Avenue is a really good example of how we can stretch local dollars going forward. To answer your question, the, the capital budget typically has both project-specific accounts and bulk accounts. So some of the projects you may be talking about, like a quick build project, may be in a bulk account. In other words, the, the department has set a parameter around how much work they think they can get done in a particular fiscal year, but they haven't decided on which projects they would do. The resurfacing, the sidewalk, those are all bulk accounts. So those are fairly straightforward, and your, your path to influence is through the agencies. And it, it doesn't have to be years in advance. It can be more or less in the, in the budget year, so to speak, when they are implementing their bulk account projects.
Okay, and one last thing about the bulk account projects, which I think might be helpful. Also, within DPW, there was the water main replacement, which is various locations, which was for $17 million. And I guess it's kind of the same bulk, the bulk, you know, it doesn't say where, where it's going to be at. I've recognized that there are, there are, DPW has this list of priority water main replacements, and it's maybe two years or three years long. And that's what money is going to go funding there, prioritize of which pipes are oldest and which ones need to be replaced the soonest. But I will say, sometimes there are, there is a, with us looking to prioritize building more housing, dense housing, more and more housing that's being built are requiring sprinkler systems in which our water, water main lines aren't able to meet those requirements because those water mains were put in place before the sprinkler system requirements. Now, what's that's creating is additional costs and sometimes deferment from these projects actually coming to place. So if someone's trying to build dense housing, and now they realize they have to build sprinkler systems, the water main lines that's in place isn't able to handle that sprinkler system. And then when we look to see if, you know, when this water main line is going to get replaced, if it's not on the list, then that water main line doesn't get replaced. And then to replace that water main line becomes a part of that project, and then the project may not happen and get called in question. I would ask if, whether or not, because it happened in, you know, my district, and good thing we worked with the state, and also the city was a great partner, DPW was able to find extra money to help make that happen. But with these capital improvement projects, is there a way we can also set money aside for instances like that? And maybe, you know, where, where there is funds for water main lines, for projects that are, you know, going to happen so we can continue to allow the great things that are trying to happen in the city happen, rather than just saying various locations and if there's a way we can line item that or, or provide funds for instances like that for when it doesn't necessarily fall within the department's plan?
Well, that's a great question. I do know of a situation, Councilman Bullock's district, where project, real estate projects are on hold because of a, of a water line issue. So that's very real. I will also say, in, in general, the city, like most local jurisdictions, if, if there is new construction, we attempt to include the cost of that as much as possible in the development scenario. Now, in Baltimore... Now, in Baltimore, we often have to put money into a new housing development project for a variety of reasons, whether it's infrastructure or affordability. But to your basic question about influencing the pot, again, I would return to the agency and say that's the best, that's the best place to, to influence it. I would, I think I would recognize that most of those money are being spent on deferred maintenance. They're not being spent on new projects. And we're not familiar, particularly with DPW, how those calculations are made, how they assess the condition of the asset and when they, when they implement the capital project. But I think you could have that conversation with the DPW Director.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I think it's good that we kind of differentiate deferred maintenance with, you know, opportunities, you know, and new construction. So I appreciate that clarification. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. This hearing is in recess until 12:30. At that time, we'll be back to hear from the Law Department.